Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Council Chambers. It is now ten ten a.m. and this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. There are eight members present. Mr. Mercedes, Mr. Holden, Mr. Labange, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and Ms. Design. We need ten members for a forum. Mr. Burks, Mr. Andrew, Mr. Han, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. If you're in the building, please make your way to Council Chambers. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, the year is two thousand and one. Hope you all had a good Thanksgiving and a Thanksgiving weekend. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Burks and Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sign, and Padilla. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Before beginning with today's agenda, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and ask Councilmember Pacheco to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Put your hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, first item, please. Approval of the minutes. Mr. Pacheco moves, and Ms. Holden seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Ms. Miskowski moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. On the regular agenda, item number one is the item notice for public hearing. Item number one is now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item number one? Seeing none. Mr. Clark, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Mr. President, items numbers two through thirteen on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Items through thirteen now before us, members, any specials? Ms. Pacheco?
Item number two being sent to Council District fourteen for ninety days.
Request send item number two to Council District fourteen. Without objection. Item two is referred. Mr. Holden, do you wish to call item special? Mr. Holden? Mr. Holden calls item seven special. Any other specials? Ms. Miskowski calls item six special. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clark, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please. Items numbers fourteen through twenty-seven are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items fourteen through twenty-seven now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. Any specials? Mr. Holden calls twenty-two special. Any other specials? Mr. Labange calls twenty-six special. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clark, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. President, item number twenty-eight on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held. Anybody wishing to be heard on item twenty-eight? Call special by Mr. Garcetti. Next item, please. Items numbers twenty-nine through thirty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. Twenty-nine through thirty-one, I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. Any specials? Mr. Holden calls item thirty special. Motion is required. Item twenty-nine, let's call that special. Item thirty-one, anybody wishing to call that special? If not, Mr. Clark, please open the roll on item thirty-one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item thirty-one is approved. Next item, please. Item number thirty-two is a closed session item. Do you wish to have that remain on the desk? Let's hold that on the desk. So the next item before you is item number six, called special by Councilmember Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to call to the council's attention that we have passed an important first milestone, and that is that we have had a review and a report submitted to the Department of Justice by the independent monitor on the city's compliance with the consent decree. The monitor essentially found a great degree of support, a great degree of understanding, a great attention being paid to it by the department. It was not without some criticism, and the criticisms, in part, dealt with the still very, very lengthy delay in some instances in going through a disposition of discipline matters, and the independent monitor wanted to call attention to that and have us do better, and there is going to be a report back to the Police Commission on that matter. And the independent monitor also found that there were still some members didn't identify the numbers or where they were, but some members who he felt still did not really embrace the consent decree, did not understand why we were involved in this. But he indicated, and the Police Department and the commission representatives indicated that they were going to work very ardently to not just make this a check the boxes that we are in compliance, but to really understand culturally and embrace this as a part of the department and the institution. So I think the city felt good that, in fact, we are on track, the work that we had done to gear up, to meet our deadlines, is working. The one item that is recommended in this report is a transfer of a small amount of money on the pedestrian stop issue, just to make sure that we're able to codify and keep up the work in terms of the calculations of what's going on. So I essentially just want to call this special to let the council know that we are passing muster, we are on the way with our partners, and I think that there is a major sea change that we will be seeing over the coming years, as these things become, as I say, more embraced within the department, rather than just to check off on a box saying that we're in compliance, but to really institutionally and culturally change from within.
Thank you. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, report's good. Just have, we have four recommendations, one through four, and one is to request Police Commission to review the concerns identified in the independent monitor's first quarterly report to the court. Do we have the first quarter? Do we have a copy of that report?
We received it, reviewed it, committee.
I don't have it here. And also request Police Department to update the Public Safety Committee in January two thousand and two regarding the misconduct investigation timeframe. What about, what is this misconduct? And what do they investigate regarding misconduct of police officers?
These are the normal kind of issues where an officer would be written up for some kind of misconduct, some kind of items that may or may not require discipline, and they have to go through a normal review process, and the problem within the department is that that review process has been inordinately long, and as a consequence, certain officers are held up for potential promotion, for other consideration, and the people who are making perhaps some complaints in some instances are not feeling that they're getting resolution. So all sides are uncomfortable with the processes that had been taking place. And essentially, what I think the independent monitor indicated is that we are doing better with those that are initiated now, but there is still a very, very lengthy backlog that is still not being resolved to the satisfaction of what we indicated was going to happen.
Right. You also requested in your report that they report back within twenty days regarding the status of clarifications to Special Order thirteen to ensure clear compliance with the consent decree, paragraph seventy-three. Do you want to tell us about that?
Maybe I ask Mr. Gunn, who'd come forward and talk about that one item. Special Order thirteen and the need to clarify it.
Joe Gunn, Executive Director of the Police Commission. On this, the department has come out with, and the commission has approved, a new method of investigating personnel complaints, a three-tiered method, and I think the testimony was that they fully expect about thirty-three percent of the total complaints can now be handled in a faster, expedient way at a lower level. This will, we hope, with other measures that are coming into place, free up more investigative time for the more serious offenses and result in a drastic reduction in the backlog.
My question to you, and you can tell me about it later if you can't tell me today, fine. What part of these delays in regards to these investigation of misconduct on behalf of police individuals is attributed to the commission consent decree order or the police chief? Because he's taking the heat for it all.
I think, Councilman, that there's a lot of reasons. I think when the department changed their system for accepting complaints as a basis, as a result of the Christopher Commission recommendations, total complaints went from two thousand to over six thousand a year. That was a tremendous increase in the amount of complaints that came into the department, and I think by a large part, we're still suffering from that increase in that backlog.
Mr. President, members, this increase in complaints based on the recommendation of the Christopher Commission suggests that there would be a delay in promotions, Mr. Design, when some of the officers so, in fact, deserve it because of the complaints. There'd be a lot of flexibility there, and so, you know, the pointing, finger pointing is ongoing, as you perhaps already know, at this time, and it seemed to me, at least, that you or the commission, or the commission with your recommendation, should respond officially to some of the finger pointing as to who's responsible for the delays and why the delays are taking place in the first place, and the fact it's part of the system, which we introduced and accepted based on the recommendation of the Christopher Commission.
Commissioner Holden, at the last commission meeting, President Caruso asked Commissioner Ochi to form a discipline task force. She is in the process of rounding up the members of that task force to further look at the whole system to see how it can be improved.
As we speak today, the finger pointing individuals can be answered, their concerns, their questions should be addressed and not wait for the task force to come up with. Should we do the streamlined offering?
I agree with you. The commissioner--
Then I saw recommended, and we'll talk about that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, it occurs to me that absent the community's understanding and knowledge of whatever progress we are claiming causes this to be less than effective or meaningful. It would seem to me that if we have progress reports that are periodically done by the monitor, perhaps we ought to be considering, and I would offer this as a suggestion to the Chair of Public Safety, a way in which this is discussed, communicated, shared in the context of the respective communities that are specifically, historically, and are otherwise predictably affected by some of the problems with which the consent decree itself is concerned. I have said repeatedly, and there is no reason for me to change course in this regard, that the issue of police reform is not well-served by the insularity of our discussions, a report issued by a monitor, a discussion at a committee meeting, and a pro forma approval in a council meeting, and a clear disconnect, Mr. President, and members of the council, with those communities broadly defined that are intensely concerned about the issue of public safety, the issue of police services, the quality thereof, and all of the issues that surround those services. So I'm very, very concerned that we can have a series of reports issued by the monitor, but I don't know how that helps us restore the level of confidence in this police department by, on behalf of the citizenry of Los Angeles, who deserves to have a sense that this department is all that it can be, and that we are causing it to be so. That remains the challenge. It is insufficient for the commission, the council, the mayor, the chief legislative analyst, the CAO, and the host of others, the city attorney, the comptroller, name them, to feel like things are okay, and the respective communities, which are represented by this body and others, feel that they are not, and I am not persuaded that we've turned a corner on that, and I would wish to invite a discussion that engages that very fundamental issue. Mr. President?
Thank you. Mr. Design?
Thank you, Mr. President. I realize that Councilmember Holden mentioned my name, expected me to respond, so I'm obligated to do so. I took the bait. Thank you, Nate. I think that rhymes. I took the bait. Thank you, Nate. Regarding the system, and I understand that the department's coming out, if they haven't already, if Mr. Gunn could answer the question. A new policy-- already, if Mr. Gunn could answer the question, a new policy on complaint investigations, Special Order Number One implemented a few years back, required that a thorough complete investigation be completed on every complaint, on every issue. And I understand that the new process, as part of the system, the streamline, will, in essence, triage to determine which ones require in-depth investigations, which ones are frivolous, which ones have no merit. And instead of putting more bodies into investigative process, streamline a system, not negate any of the significance or importance of investigations or complaint follow-up, but to bring a balance, to establish a system of credibility for the people of Los Angeles, for the employees of the police department. And I know they have a goal of about five months on investigations, and with this backlog that continues, once the investigations are complete, they got the Board of Rights that oftentimes take place. Is the process going to be streamlined so it'll gain credibility, streamlined so they don't need additional bodies out of the field, streamlined to make it work and make it a balance? If you could respond to that, please.
I think you're correct, Councilman. That's the purpose of the triage system, which was approved last meeting by the Police Commission, and is in effect on the department. Again, I'll say it's a, they're estimating that about 33% of the cases can now be handled in the streamlined case. I agree with you. I think it's all about process, it's not about resources. It's streamlining the process while at the same time ensuring the fairness of it to both the citizens and to the officers and to the department and the city. And that is the direction that we are continually looking at, trying to refine and trying to come up with better ways to solve the problem.
And when do we anticipate that taking effect?
The order is already in effect. That has been sent out to everyone on the department. They are currently working under a triage system.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Msakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Ridley Thomas, because I think he was absolutely right, saying that if we're getting a report and keeping this somewhat internal, we're really not doing the job. And the job, it's interesting, we, this report was sent to every member of the council. It's got the City Seal, the Department of Justice Seal, and the LAPD badge, but there's a missing ingredient here, and that is the public. And under the consent decree, the department is required to have quarterly meetings in the community on the consent decree. And to be frank, the department has had a problem. They've had the meetings, but no one comes when they say we're having a meeting about the consent decree. So we have to work with them, one, to create the focus of some items. They did have a focus in their last quarterly meeting on racial profiling. The next meeting that they're going to have in the communities over the next quarter is going to be on the issue of the complaint process, streamlining it, making it more efficient, making the public know. But it really is a challenge, both the department and to us, to assist them into getting the public involved in this dialogue. It's not very helpful when the department holds a meeting and there are very, very few people who come. So we, I think, can assist them in giving them, those communities of interest who will be involved in this dialogue, realize that it's important, and become engaged to be that fourth partner to this process that is going to make it ultimately effective. So I invite the members of the council to work closely with the area divisions in each of our own districts, to help create the sense in a community of the importance of this, the value of this, and that their participation will be meaningful, because that's what it's going to take constantly to make this really work and not have it just isolated as another report that will be put on the shelf somewhere.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo a little bit of what Councilmember Ridley Thomas said, and I think that what Councilor Msakowski mentioned, it's not just which players need to be there, which I agree is an important part of what we can do as community representatives, but we also have been lacking, I think, sometimes the tone and tenor from the department at these meetings that is appropriate. In Hollywood, there was a meeting in which basically the department came and gave a presentation on the consent decree, saying, see, this is again why you're not safe, because we have to deal with all of this stuff. That doesn't seem to be the tenor of a department that wants to reform itself. And if we are going to be watchdogs here at the council, we need to make sure that those meetings, there's an honest dialogue about what the consent decree is. So for those friends of mine who are in Hollywood, other divisions, we do such a good job with other things, we really need to change that attitude about what this consent decree is. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to make sure that those groups are there, but also that those, these presentations and community outreach that's sent by the department is done in a more straightforward and neutral way.
Mr. Pacheco.
Colleagues, Mr. President, my viewpoint on this whole matter is let's not lose sight on the fact that the number-one responsibility we have is to make our communities safe. I know we talk about the consent decree and reforming the police department, but my concern is that just yesterday, I was in a meeting with some residents, and the residents are convinced that the police officers are putting their hands in their pockets because they're concerned about the consent decree, they're concerned about how the discipline system is not fair to them, and that they'd rather drive by and not do anything than run the risk of getting involved. And the residents want me to fight for a couple of things as we go along, try to protect them. One that I will ask you to look at seriously is if we do have a problem with the number of officers, then the police department should be authorizing more overtime for our divisions. They have identified the fact that their senior lead officers and the narcotics units are not out on the streets doing sting operations or undercover work, because according to the responses they've received, the department doesn't have any money. But at the same time, we have salary savings in our personnel budget. So I know we're dealing with the consent decree and the reports and the monitoring, but just when we're looking at one thing, the community feels we're missing the big picture in getting more officers out there. My community, the community of Boyle Heights right now, is going through a major turf war. There have been more increased shootings. Just yesterday, we had a little girl shot, a baby, because the mother was looking at a house because she was thinking of moving in to the neighborhood, and some gang members thought that they were another gang or a vehicle from another gang, and started firing on this vehicle. And the reports I have are that a little baby got killed, and the siblings are injured. So I will be working on that reward motion soon. But my point is that the Boyle Heights community feels that we don't have enough officers. And if they're asking for more officers, the one thing I can tell you is, by inference, that means that they do have confidence in LAPD, that they do want our officers out there protecting them. So I would simply tell you that as we go through the reports and we're monitoring, let's not get so focused or into the consent decree that we lose sight of the fact that our number-one priority is protecting the community. And I just want to reassure you that that is my number-one priority.
Thank you. Did you have something special to say, or should I continue in sequence? Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Ridley Thomas always has something special to say. This has been a very good discussion, colleagues, and I think it's useful for all of us, actually, to spend a moment during these discussions, listening to each other, not just making our own speeches, but to really listen to how, what Mr. Pacheco's concerns are in Boyle Heights, listen to what Mr. Garcetti's concerns are in Hollywood, what Mr. Ridley Thomas's concerns are, and what the concerns of the Chair of the Public Safety Committee are. I, for one, find it useful to hear all of you opine on this issue, and I think it's good that we do it in public and do it regularly. There's one additional point which I would like to bring to everyone's attention. There was a paragraph in the monitor's report that merited some discussion at our safety committee. The monitor noted that, well, he concluded that many, if not most, officers of the LAPD were committed to the consent decree, that there were some that were not, and that there were some who still believed that the Rodney King beating was properly handled by the LAPD, and some who viewed the area that they patrolled as enemy territory. And this led to a discussion amongst some about, well, what paragraph in the consent decree does that implicate? What's this doing in the monitor's report? It's not on point. It's not what the monitor is supposed to be monitoring. And I got to tell you that I found that discussion disturbing, because I don't think the consent decree ought to be a check-the-box exercise for us in the city. And I am concerned every time I hear or learn that there may be some, well-meaning as they may be, who view it as a check-the-box exercise, that these are hurdles for us to overcome, and that if we overcome the hurdles that are on the piece of paper, that we will have succeeded in the process of reform. Well, I submit to all of you that if we comply with all the paragraphs in the consent decree, and at the conclusion of the monitor's work, there is one officer on the LAPD who believes that he's patrolling enemy territory, and if there's one officer on the LAPD who believes that the Rodney King beating was properly handled by the LAPD, we will have failed in our task to reform the LAPD. And so I just want to urge everyone who is involved in this process, well-meaning as they may be, not to lose sight of the fact that it is not a box-checking exercise, and we all have a responsibility here on the council to hold them to that.
Mr. Burns.
One of the pitfalls that we fell into with this situation of being able to take care of our city and our districts was the consent decree, and that's why I opposed it at the time. And I said that the day will come where we will rue the fact that we did sign this thing. True, we would have had to go to court and defend ourselves, but I think that we had the ability to do the things that are the right things to do, to make sure that we involve the public, that we have a police force that does what it should be doing. What we have now is a group of individuals out there who are afraid to enforce the law. They're afraid they're either going to be on report, because currently, under the system that we, that's been put in place, any type of a complaint requires paperwork and a full investigation. Is that not correct? Is that not correct? I'm asking. I know it is. You don't have to answer that joke. So consequently, more time is being spent on paperwork and following up on complaints, some of which are valid, some of which are just merely people who felt that, you know, they're upset because they were caught violating the law or whatever they did. The result is that we're not getting, and Nick, I heard what you said, Nick, I know you're doing an interview now, but I did hear what you said, and you're exactly right. Our officers are afraid to enforce the law. And when you have officers who are afraid to enforce the law, then you have a situation where crime is going to increase, because they know they can get away with it. Let's face it. So, you know, members of the council, we're stuck now, and we just have to do the best we can, but the big mistake, and some of you were not here when the consent decree was approved by the council, but you're going to have to live with it, and we're going to have to do the best we can. We're going to have to make sure we have enough officers, and we're going to have to make sure that the investigative process is not so punitive that it prevents officers from doing their job, that makes them afraid to do their job.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I share the point of view that this is a very, very important discussion. And I take the point that some of us differ on this subject, and that's completely acceptable, is wholly appropriate. And I feel that airing of these respective viewpoints will cause us to deal with this matter in a way that ultimately will be constructive. I want to suggest, though, that the commission takes seriously the concerns about this not being reduced to a pro forma exercise. I think the commission has to come to grips with the fact that there is a sentiment among officers that is chilling as it relates to this dispatch of their duties as articulated by Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Burnson. But I hasten to add that there is an argument that has to be made, that officers cannot be afraid to dispatch their duties within the context and/or the confines of policy that is set forth, that has to be adhered to by all officers in the interest and the protection, not only the physical well-being of persons who reside in this city, but in fact, the very rights that they are to be accorded by virtue of them being protected by the Constitution and the range of laws that do so. And that's the essence of the consent decree. A substantiated body of pattern and practice of violation of people's rights that has resulted in utter embarrassment for the city, for the department, and millions and millions of dollars that could have otherwise been more properly spent for more honorable purposes. Mr. President, members of the council, I think the mayor, I think the commission, I think that the council has to cause the public meetings that take place on that consent decree periodic report to be more meaningful. I do not believe, to take Mr. Garcetti's point, that they will be meaningful if they are driven, controlled, or run exclusively by the department. I think we have to find a better solution. And I would so move for the Chair of Public Safety, in the context of the further discussions of this, to have a discussion, a proposal, or the like, that would cause these periodic public meetings to be convened, perhaps by the mayor's office, perhaps by the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, so that they are not simply reduced to defending the department and deflecting the concerns that may be justifiably raised by the consent decree. I would so move.
Moved in second, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, members. As I listen to this dialogue, and I'm listening to all these different points of view and some of our disappointments and concerns, I also want to put forth another perspective. That is, why aren't we using this tracking process, this analysis, to figure out or to encourage or stimulate police officers to do the kinds of things that they can do when they're out patrolling the streets? They have access to units, communication equipment, where they can be reporting when the lights are being covered by trees, when there's a kind of environment that attracts crime, when you have young people congregating, drinking in dark alleys or in dark corners, or when there's an apartment that's mismanaged, and it's at the end of a cul-de-sac where you know you can't go into that street because there will be trouble. These are the things that our officers know, but I don't see us giving them incentive to report those things, to make them part of their observation. So the incentives issue is something that we should be looking at. And perhaps these public meetings that the Councilman Ridley Thomas was referring to to our Chair of Public Safety, and how to make them more meaningful, is track when officers are actually reporting these kinds of observations to make our neighborhoods that much better. I know from volunteers who ride along with officers that they see things, that they're reporting it, they're taking the time, they have the energy and the optimism and the positive lookout to, to report these things. It's the officers that are on a day-to-day basis in this crunch, who tend to set that aside as not being very important. What I'm trying to say is, can we stimulate a kind of system that can invoke that kind of participation, that kind of observation, that makes our streets safer? It's just not about arresting people. It's also about making our streets feel and look safer, because we are describing those areas that aren't neglected. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
I'd like to ask Mr. Gunn a question, please, Mr. President, and that is, these frivolous complaints, give me some examples of what you mean by frivolous complaint.
I think probably the department should be here to, to answer that question, but I don't think--
No, just to give you a bad hello, I was told that you didn't like the way the police officers said hello, or good morning, or goodbye, or knocked on the door too hard.
Some of them were like that, but I think, I think-- Some of them are like that, but I think, I think the majority of the reduction in investigative time is going to be on the failure to qualify, the traffic accident, the failure to appear in courts, those kind of low-range disciplinary problems that really don't need a full-blown investigation and could be handled at a lower level.
You mean the police officer failed to appear in court in order to do so?
Yes, but, you know, a lot of times it's because of many reasons. Department breakdown in the system, notification, vacation.
It's not a complaint if they were notified.
No, but it is a complaint.
You can't, you can't complain against the department, it's not a breakdown.
But in, in terms of comparing that with dishonesty, with excessive force, I think you would consider that a lower-level complaint.
One more question, Mr. President. The fact that a lot of the police officers leaving the department, going to other departments on a voluntary basis, say they leave, two-thirds say they leave because the complaints are outstanding. I mean, that's, it's got to be pretty major. They have outstanding complaints against them, and they're leaving. Well, the public needs to know that. All right, that's another question. Mr. President, members, I heard my dear friend, Mr. Pacheco, and his heart's in the right place. But Mr. Burnson and I, I believe, are two novos against the consent decree. And it's not that I'm for racial profiling, you can look at me and tell that that's not where my head is, but I think public safety was a prime concern, number one. Number two, the police commission, the police department, was full steam ahead in implementing the Christopher Commission recommendation. The police chief, with the recommendation that those being investigated in the police commission, were really in fact firing a lot of police officers during the ban list that was suggested by the Christopher Commission. I think that what's happened subsequent to the adoption of the consent decree, number one, and number two, and prior there, too, police officers sometimes closed their eyes. Crime is going up, you've got to ask yourself, why? Undetected, unnoticed, or maybe some of these guys are not pursued or apprehended as they should and ought to be. So, you know, you can't have it both ways, and you remember the mobile digital transmitter, where all that information was gathered and put in the back room? From the Christopher Commission says, where is that information? They had not looked at it for years, and when you get these reports from police officers, where it gets, how tall are you, where we stop you, and they have to answer all these 13, 14, 15 questions, which is voluminous, that's going to end up in the back room also. You'll never be able to compile the data to determine whether or not the police officer was a good cop or a bad cop. So it's, it's more than, more information that we really needed. And for those who say that that kind of reporting is going to help us make better police officers and bridge the communication gap between the community and police department, it will never happen, because that information will never be disseminated to the right people who are going to scrutinize and say, bad cop, good cop, bad cop, good cop. And that's the problem. When I look at a cop, the way they conduct themselves on the, on the jobs, I know they're bad, and when they do a good job, I know they're good. And for the most part, they're good, we can't live without them in the community, not in this society. So I thought it was a bad deal then. I know that Mr. Pacheco just said that the consent decree should not get in the way of safe neighborhoods. I know he said that, but I was hoping that he would join us in voting against that, but, you know, I'm not going to say anything about it, I told you so. I get tired of saying that anyway. But Mr. Pacheco's a good guy. My time's over, I'm sorry, Mr. President, thank you very much for the consideration.
You're welcome.
I thought it was important that this all be put on the table.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a great debate, and I rise in support of Councilmember Ridley-Thomas's motion, and also to praise Councilmember Weiss's words of wisdom. I think sometimes we have these false kind of dichotomies here, whether we're against the police or for the police, whether we're for police reform or against police reform. Everybody here is clearly for public safety, but I do want to address something that Councilman Pacheco and Councilmember Burnson said, which I, I think we need to, I agree with Councilman Pacheco that there's that feeling among police officers, their hands are tied, but we need to explode the myth that what's tying their hands is actually abiding by constitutional municipal law. We need to explode the myth that moving forward for police officers means going backward to some other time, because that will not be progress. We can only go forward, people can only feel safe in their communities, and only can feel empowered as police officers when they recognize what reform is. If people are saying they can't engage with the community, any police officer says they can't engage with the community because their hands are tied right now, doesn't understand what community engagement is. And I think what Councilmember Weiss was talking about, we had an incredible meeting last night in Atwater, where there's been 10 murders since August, 50 times the normal rate, and we had the local captain, Captain Jackson, two captains there, we had Chief York. It was a great community meeting, because there was an actual engagement with the community. But those officers, and any officer who still says today that it's because what's printed on the back of my card is the reason that I can't engage with the civilians, the citizens that live in a given neighborhood, that is wrong, and we cannot use that as an excuse for actually moving forward with a badly needed reform. So I rise again in support of Councilmember Ridley-Thomas's motion.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Of the group of councilmembers, I'm the only one who's done 33 years of LAPD, and let me give you a little perspective. Officers are afraid, they're afraid to do the job, they're afraid of the complaint system. Mr. Gunn says it's going to change. You look at the consent decree, and I support reform. I support the senior lead program, which was a Christopher Commission recommendation, which was disbanded and put in, partially restored, into the police department. You talk about engaging with the community, the police officers want to engage with the community, they want to make the community safe, but they're afraid to do the job. And I ask, what does the consent decree do to benefit the police officers? What issue there gives them motivation to do anything to protect the community? It seems to be adverse to their rule, policy professionalism of protecting the community. There should be something in there to reward the good officers. And then you look at the whole profile of the LAPD, 1,000 officers short, 90 sergeants short, 114 detectives short. If you don't have your field supervisors, your 90 sergeants that are out there auditing, monitoring, supervising police officers, who's going to make sure they're doing what is appropriate? I'd ask Mr. Gunn if he can answer, when are we going to have the 90 sergeants put in the field, since we are currently 90 sergeants short, your first-line supervisors, and Commissioner Gunn was a police officer or commander, you know clearly, to make things happen, you need to have proper supervision. And when you run 90 sergeants short in the field, that's 90 sergeants that are there monitoring, auditing, making sure they're doing the proper activities, so we don't have problems. Can you answer that question about the 90 sergeants, which is part of the consent decree, to have proper supervision?
Councilman, I can only tell you that the commission had a discussion with the chief over this problem. The chief is the appointing authority, it's within his jurisdiction to appoint people to the, to the rank of sergeant. The commission did express their concern and indicated that they would be monitoring the situation.
Well, while they monitor the situation, we have a police department that's understaffed, undersupervised, and we don't have field supervisors making sure the officers, and we have a very young force, we know, who's there monitoring, monitoring and mentoring and directing and counseling these officers, who are probably trying to do the right thing, as Councilmember Ridley-Thomas says, we don't want to violate people's rights, and you can't learn everything in the book. What guidance do they have? What guidance is currently there with that 90-sergeant gap?
Commission does not disagree with you.
Well, when can we see the change? Because if we want this consent decree to kick in, we want officers to feel comfortable in doing their job, we want the gangbangers to know that we're not going to tolerate the violence that caused in the community, it seems that we're missing the big circuit. And the big circuit is, where do we put that link? When is that going to happen?
I can only tell you this, that the commission has the power to evaluate the chief and the performance of his duties. The commission does not have the power to make appointments. That's where the situation lies right now, and the commission is having discussion with the chief relative to this problem.
And do they admit there's a problem with lack of supervision, baseline supervision?
Absolutely, the commission is well aware that there is a problem, and that those 90 sergeants are well needed in the field.
And they would be field supervisors? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Gunn, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, please. The officers, when they're in their vehicle, do they have the ability to report items, such as bulky items, trash, out of, fallen trees, broken lights, cars, do they have that ability to report that when they're driving around?
Councilman, it's been a long time since I've been in a patrol car, and I really don't know the answer to that, perhaps the department can, can make that--
Maybe I can put it this way, can the commission look at the possibility of rewarding or recognizing the officers that take the time to report and add to the safety of the environment by participating and, and supporting a community, by reporting these kinds of items, and to show that there is that kind of advocacy on their part, as well as the enforcement?
I will certainly relate to the commissioners' that suggestion. I might add that the commission in the past has always supported the idea of officers in the field engaging in quality-of-life work, in which primarily in the past, the senior lead officers would take the complaints from the community regarding abandoned vehicles, rubbish, shrubbage that was in blocking signs, and forward it to the appropriate city department.
Well, you know, we have a staff that doesn't work, but our volume is so great, the densities are so high in some of these neighborhoods, it's so hard to cover it all when we're supposed or when we have to, especially when you're dealing with gang shootings, you're dealing with the kinds of activities that allow young people to congregate and get involved with these gang cultures. Have we ever implemented a program like that, where we've been able to recognize officers for that kind of work? Have we ever done that, to your knowledge?
I don't believe there's ever been a reward system that dealt with that kind of work.
So we've never put one in place, a reward system of that type?
No, I think the department and the commission always assumed that senior lead officers were doing that as part of their everyday jobs.
Okay, so that, that's an assumption, then?
Yes, it is.
So now, in light of this consent decree, we have been basically documenting and memorializing the negative aspects of what an officer has been accused of. We look at the more negative part of their experience, correct? I mean, this profiling, all this other business. So why are we using this as an opportunity to highlight the positives, and to create incentives for police officers to do the quality-of-life issues that occur in the long run, longer run?
I, I, I know of several cases in the past that I'm personally familiar with, where officers did receive a departmental commendation for doing that kind of work. There was one in the harbor that I'm aware of, there was one in South LA, and there's another one in North Hollywood, where because of their, their work in solving a community problem, the department gave them a commendation. So in that respect, they did get a commendation, and they were rewarded by the department.
They're rare and foreign in between.
I, I think the department's going to have to answer that, I'm not familiar with that.
The Chair of Public Safety just wanted to ask a question. Would it be possible, as a friendly amendment, to put in place some kind of an incentive or award, a recognition program, so when we're collecting this data, we can also talk about how police officers do it from the bottom line? Would it be appropriate?
I think we could do something like that. We have, I push my button to speak, and talk about some of the other programs that have been done in that regard. And mostly, they've been done where we, where we really created specific task forces in community, that, that the police department was building a safety with sanitation, and really create a focused effort in certain communities, and it has worked, it has worked in some areas in the valley where there were deterioration, exactly the kind of problem you're talking about with bulky items in the alleys, and it, it was not, and I think this is the problem, we can't be dependent on the police department to do that, but the police department, in partnership with others, we just actually proposed a pilot effort with the Bureau of Sanitation, where our trash truck drivers, who are going through every community, every, you know, all week long, every day, to make little notations on exactly the kinds of things you're talking about, that they would then be forwarded to other departments to deal with.
Just, just like to make a friendly amendment to, that's on the floor, and that is, if we can look at an incentive or a reward system as part of our, our process of dealing with this consent decree.
Okay. That's a motion, Mr. Caskey.
Yeah, I was just going to respond to Mr. Reyes's issue. And Mr. Reyes, one of the things that we can do ourselves is we bring here people on Fridays for resolutions and special merit, and we often recognize some police officers and other city employees who go that extra mile and really create and involve themselves with the community, the way that you're talking about. And I think that we can develop more of those, and work with the commission, maybe ask the chief as to where and how that can work. But in the community meetings that I have been at, with the senior lead officers in the community, the senior leads do do that. It's not just a perception that they do it, they, they really do it. They, they, they know the local homeless community, they work with the neighbors on how they will deal with it in a, in a sensitive manner, in a sensitive manner, helping create the connections between the, the places that can provide social service support. So, so the, that's why the senior leads are so important, and community-based policing is so important, because that's the, the core of the kind of thing that you're talking about, that we really need to try to expand. And it's always been the goal of the department to expand that, but in light of everything else we're doing, and right now being down 1,000 officers short, the attention that the officers have to give is to more of the crime-fighting side. So I think once with our, hopefully, more successful recruiting efforts, getting the officers back up to full strength, and with all the appropriate supervision that Councilmember Zine was talking about, we can then really reinvest in the communities and community policing in the way that you're talking about, and whether it's incentive program, reward program, just merit program, all of those things should be done through the police commission and the department, with the recommendation of those who come to their attention as well, so the council, for those officers in those communities where it is working the way we want, as the model, to have that expanded citywide.
Mr. Labange.
President, members of council, just following the chairperson of public safety on that. In 1976, I started, Dennis was a young police officer then, I started here, Mayor Tom Bradley's Youth Council with Mark Thomas. And all the issues that you just spoke of, Ed, things were taken care of. In 1978, there was a change in the taxation, and a change in how things were done, as far as in communities because of Prop 13, and how things got done in the neighborhoods. And the senior lead officer emerged greatly from that, because that was the only person in the community over the coming years to do things. But we have to have a major discussion outside of this, on all of us in the city family, whether you're a public work inspector, whether you're with the Department of Water and Power, whether you're with transportation, on how we communicate the problems that are in the community with technology that we have today, right into the next day. So if there's a light out at the intersection of Beverly Boulevard and Highland, and someone from the city, one of us passes through there, they can punch a button and let people know that it's out, it needs to be corrected. That has to be discussed and done. But are police officers have to live with the consent decree? Just like the Bureau of Sanitation lived with the consent decree out at High Period, for the many years that it took to clean up High Period. We have to do that. But that discussion, Ed, and what Chairperson, Mr. Caskey spoke of, we have to have on how we improve not just community-based policing, but community-based government. I think it's another issue to see how we do that. And I just wanted to rise and support our Chairperson of public safety. Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I was simply going to ask that in our final direction and final report, that we request the police commission to look at the issue of overtime and how it's allocated, because I can tell you right now that the community members that I spoke with yesterday are being told that there's no money and no officers available to patrol the community because of the fact of low morale and people aren't applying. They understand that since September 11th, people are applying, but by the time that catches up, they're very concerned that we're going to have more shootings in the neighborhood. So they don't understand why we're not using more overtime in our divisions, and giving our officers more of an opportunity to serve in the community. They have gone so far as to write a letter to the mayor, asking and inviting the Alley County Sheriff into Ball Heights if Hollenback Division can't put officers on the streets. That's how serious they are about the fact that they want more police officers in the neighborhood. So as we send this report out, as we ratify the report, and have all these friendly amendments-- we send this report out, as we ratify the report and have all these friendly amendments, I would simply wanna ask the Police Commission to seriously look at why the police chief won't authorize overtime for our divisions and exactly giving our captains more power to have people patrolling in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Clerk, we have the report before us and several motions and amended motions. You guide us through the votes, please.
Number 6B was Reyes-Miskauskas' motion, initiate a reward incentive program focusing on partnership of city departments as part of the process of dealing within the context of the consent decree. That's 6B. Did you wish to vote on that now?
Let's vote on 6B. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
6B is approved.
6A is a motion brought forth by Councilmember Ridley Thomas, seconded by Mr. Garcetti, that within the independent monitor report process, that the Public Safety Committee and the mayor have discussions or proposals to allow periodic meetings to be substantial and involving the public in honest discussion and addressing the essence of the consent decree.
Please open the roll on 6A, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
6A is approved.
I have item number 6 before you as amended.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Before proceeding to the next item, the Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Members of the council. It gives me a high degree of pride to welcome to the council, chambers, memberships, membership in Congress, a leadership. If you permit me just to acknowledge them, they are here for the purpose of making the applications for the certification process that we have heard so much about, known from the district, from the southwest Neighborhood Council. Kenneth Allen is here, and Mr. Allen, if you would stand, from the central Neighborhood Council. Katrina Davis-Hill is here from the north area. O.C. Pinkel is here, and Michael Turner from the southeast area. Elizabeth McCullen, the one and only Elizabeth McCullen. And Emma Johnson is here, southeast as well. From the west area, Victor Namius, Mary Stewart, Taylor Mayfield, Mary Darks, Ann Robert Cole. Mr. President, members of the council, would you welcome them, please, to the parliamentary congress leaders? And they will be making their presentation today to the department and they will have parliament. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here. Mr. Clerk, before... Mr. Ridley Thomas?
They listen very closely to that discussion on the consent decree. I'll get my instructions from them when we convene in the back, and if I come back with some good ideas, you'll know where they came from.
Mr. Clerk, before proceeding to item seven, I've been informed that the city staff is not quite here to respond to questions. So let's proceed to item 22. Item number 22 called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden?
This is directed primarily, maybe Mr. Garcetti can answer this question. We have Trizicon is... Mr. Garcetti, would you explain it to us, hold my time for president, as he do so? Thank you. Regarding this motion you're putting in?
Yes. This simply directs the city to be able to accept job training funds from the Trizicon company. The recent opening that many of you have been at, that many citizens in Los Angeles have been at, at Hollywood and Highland, one of the commitments that I believe Councilmember Goldberg got in the original agreement was to make sure that Trizicon hired locally, gave jobs to people in the community, and these funds at $100,000 will go forward to help the CDD and Trizicon work together to do job fairs and other similar things, some of which have happened in the community already for local hire.
Mr. President, members, the $100,000 we should receive, but it's token compared to what Trizicon can provide for training, for jobs. $100,000 won't even go around the corner. When you compare that with what we did for Trizicon, the parking structure, tax credits, other types of benefits, I mean, that developer has milked the city of Los Angeles. There are some things that were put before the council, except it was in Miss Goldberg's district. I didn't really wanna vote for them, because we were not getting a fair deal at all. Everything was for them, the developer, and very little for the community. And now they're gonna be really gracious, nice, and gonna offer us $100,000 of the millions and millions of dollars in tax credits and tax benefits we've given them. Mr. Garcetti, you were not here when this deal was negotiated, but not officially, but you know, just meeting you, tell them that there's at least one member of the council is unhappy, that this does not satisfy the hunger and the need to provide job and job training for the people in that general area. The police security, police protection, tell them more police officers they're getting in that area now? For safety and security, many, many more hours. Just do an assessment of that. It's just not a fair deal. And since we do need more jobs, since there are high unemployment, since training is essential in order to meet the needs of some of the job requirements to the area, tell them $100,000 just won't do. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti?
I'll be sure to pass that on, Councilmember Holden. I don't know the next one offhand. They had one about a month ago, and I know there are quite a few local hires. But I should also say that with the subsidies that the city has given, that Trizicon is taking about a $100 million loss with this project already. So I think that, not that we shouldn't fight for more, but that there was a corporate commitment there, and I think many of you, the mayor was at the Hollywood Christmas parade, many of you have been there, really the product is already spurring the sort of growth we wanna see on Hollywood Boulevard. And that's important to remember, but I'll let them know for sure.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. Holden took my thunder. Mr. President, colleagues, no, I was simply gonna ask, what was the total cost of this project in terms of the redevelopment? Does anyone have that number handy? The total project? $650 million? Okay. And we got $100,000? I think the city of Los Angeles has been moving in the right direction in terms of community benefit packages for our redevelopment projects. I think we should seriously look at, instead of giving the developer the big million dollars, or in this case, I think it was 30 to 40, that we set aside maybe a million of that for our own local hire program that we administer tied to these programs, instead of relying on the developer. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, all the money's commingled anyway. So we should just be maybe a little more aggressive on how we package these things. But I think at the time, though, the project was sort of groundbreaking from the standpoint that there was a community benefits package attached to it. So from that standpoint, I think we're moving in the right direction. But I really think we need to hold our developers, the CRA, and ourselves more accountable in terms of how we can bring more local jobs through these projects.
Mr. Garcetti?
Just very briefly, I completely agree with you, Councilman Pacheco, and it was good to see when we just approved NOHO, which I know is gonna be coming to council in committee, that there's similar issues there. And Councilmember Ridley Thomas has actually taken the lead on this, and colleagues, this is something that I think we're gonna be looking at again in the Economic Development Employment Committee, how we can look at a community benefits menu, not a preordained package that has to go through, but in any development project, a menu in which we can decide what the city should do, what developers should do to make sure that there is that public benefit. Here, in this case, it was groundbreaking. There's living wage, there's local hiring, there's a number of things that were done in the community. Staples Center is another example. NOHO was the most recent. And I think we, even as we go on with smaller development projects, need to look at that and need to see what the city does best. And I completely agree that often with the job trainings, we are the best prepared with the WIB and CDD to do that. And so we can look at doing that, and that's just a preview of coming attractions.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item 22, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, item number 28 on the supplemental agenda is called special by Councilmember Garcetti. Before... Excuse me, item number 26, we missed that by Councilmember Labange. Go to item 26.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just wanted to let you know, this motion which we brought in here instructs the great need for us to be aware of the Los Angeles School District's need to build schools in our communities. And it asks that the superintendent of schools comes to the committee chaired by Ms. Han and a chancellor of the Community College District. In Los Angeles, there is Harvard College, there's Trade Tech, Los Angeles City, Valley, Mission, and Pierce. All those are public facilities. Some of those were part of the Los Angeles School District prior to the creation of the Community College District. We must, we cannot create more land. We must manage our land properly and well. And schools, and the term linkage is so important as we develop our schools in the future, as near parks, as near libraries, as near transit systems. Just in the paper today, there was some story about the Ambassador Hotel, which the district has been trying to acquire for over 10 years almost, and it may not happen. I particularly favor in Mr. Garcetti's district that we work some relationship at City College on Vermont, or some type of high school complex there to meet the needs there. It's right off the subway system. But having a working relationship with the Community College District and the Los Angeles Unified School District with the superintendent and the chancellor and this council will help us, help them do the right thing in acquiring lands, which is very important, because we wanna make sure it's done right. And you know, I went up, as I mentioned to you before, I grew up in Los Angeles and went to John Marshall High School, God bless manual arts, but John Marshall still has the same smallest track, smallest track in the city. Buglos all over the place. We're not gonna be able to expand Marshall High, nor should we. But we have to use the lands right that are there, and that means building up and building out. So I just wanted to bring this attention to fellow council members and thank you. And Ms. Han is gonna work it through her committee, and we'll be back to you in the future with some proper steps that we can take to do the right thing for all of Los Angeles, as we do all, whether it's the Community College District, the Unified School District, or the city of Los Angeles. And this council represents the same people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to support the motion that is made by Mr. Labange and seconded by Ms. Han. My amendment, I trust, will be construed as a friendly one. This matter is so important to all of us. This is a single item that could impact land use in the 15 council districts in this city in a way that nothing else can. Schools need to be built. I suspect they will be built. And the question for us is how we most effectively coordinate with the Los Angeles Unified School District, with the Los Angeles Community College District in their construction and expansion programs respectively. This matter, in my view, is so important, Mr. Labange, until I think it ought to be a special order of the day where the respective heads of these major institutions, the School District, the Community College District, that is to say, the chancellor and the superintendent, come to the council and present what their plans are, what their visions are. I believe that it is appropriate for it to go to committee pursuant to that presentation, so all of us are clued in. And the work that the staff here and their respective staff need to do ought to then commence. But I think we ought to raise this up high and deal with this so that all of us are operating on the same page. And they are obliged, I believe, to share that with the 15, plus ultimately, and the respective viewers so that everybody is clear that this is a major policy initiative that needs to be dealt with. So I share the concern. I want to join you in elevating it. It would seem to me that that would be a way to do it.
Mr. Labange?
Ridley Thomas, our chairperson, and I spoke in committee about this in making the motion, and your idea is a great idea. But we'd like to be able to craft something to come back to you to work it together in committee and then come back and report to the full council right here, the superintendent, the chancellor. And then also, Ed, I know we have Water and Power here. Water and Power stepped up to the plate and offered Anthony Office Building in the 7th District as a school, and there was a story in the paper about that recently, of one school upset that one school is gonna be better than another school. I wanna say that I'd like to have, go to committee, and then also, at the same time that they're here, we have the proper people from all departments listening.
Yes.
So that they could step right up to the plate and help, that the real estate officers from the various departments and general services are there. And including, I mentioned in Mr. Garcetti's district, City College, I've often felt that in your district, Mr. Reyes, the receiving hospital is underutilized as a facility that could be a school. Some of our public properties should be there. So if we could go to committee, craft it, and come back and ask that they come here on a special order of business, as you suggest, that will serve the people of Los Angeles well.
I would hope that that could be the case, and that's acceptable to me. Mr. President, Mr. Labange and Ms. Han may need to be reminded that there was a motion that did a working task force between LAUSD and the city on this issue, and the Community College District needs to be added to that. So if you go back and look at that motion, something ought to be in place that ought to report to your committee as well to see what they've done, if anything, today.
And in the first week, or second week of January, I think it's very timely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to ask if anyone has systematically requested reports on Prop BB renovations in all the council districts in terms of, are we getting, do we have any dialogue with the LA Unified right now regarding those projects? And if not, can we, during this time, are we gonna, it sounded like we're gonna bring it back as a special order item. So if we're gonna bring it back as a special order item, I would just include that we develop some sort of mechanism to dialogue with the School District on Prop BB projects in our districts. And that's my only comment regarding this matter.
Okay, I'm sure that can be accommodated. Mr. Reyes?
Council President members, it just seems to me that we have a planning department that has all this data where we can start focusing and understanding where the concentration of youth, our student age groups, understand what it means in our district. We need to coordinate these kinds of issues. I think the planning department, together with DOT, start thinking about where and when the students will be coming in, parking, how they'll be situated near these facilities, the impact on the residencies. It's a very comprehensive issue we have to deal with. And I'd like to invoke, as chairman of Planning, Land Management, to start tying in these very real variables in how we improve our communities and how we complement these facilities with our residencies, how we start looking at one-way streets, drop-off zones, et cetera, et cetera, so we minimize the fear factor in our homeowner associations and other organizations that might want to, for right reasons from their point of view, not have these kinds of facilities. So it's not a simple process. It's something that we need to engage and literally bring in this resource. So I applaud you in the efforts that you're doing, and I wanna support you in this complement. But Moscow also wants to have us think out of the box here. And this is gonna sound a little bizarre, but, you know, in San Diego and other places where they have their Alley River, they've been able to deck pieces of it and literally create land for facilities, for schools. If you look where the Alley River runs through, you look at the neighborhoods that it's going through, the neighborhoods that have the greatest the neighborhoods that have the greatest proportion of students taking buses, greatest proportion of neighborhoods that don't have parks. We can use that airspace over the river that's adjacent to these neighborhoods. And we just need to look at it. We have to be strategic wherever we go. But we can literally start decking pieces of it to create this land. The reason why I think it's a beneficial or least an opportunity is because that means we won't have to take people out of their homes. We don't have to carve out neighborhoods and displace people from neighborhoods that have been established over decades. These are the original suburbs. This is where these neighborhoods evolved in. And that's where you find the greatest need. So I want to throw that idea out there. It's something we should engage. It's an opportunity. And we can start stimulating a different way in which we view our city. Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I rise obviously in support of this motion, which I seconded. And clearly, that is what we are attempting to do in the Education and Neighborhoods Committee is to finally make this link between the City of Los Angeles and the School District. And I really appreciate the fact that you've brought in the Community College District. And it's more, and what I'm envisioning, Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, that we come back to the full council with is, again, I want to bring up the issues, not only of how the city helps the School District and the Community College in terms of building new campuses, land use, but how we can form these joint use partnerships and agreements. There is a great deal of need in recreation and parks for more land for kids to play soccer. I know Harvard College is a great example. The community of Wilmington has more soccer teams than they have playing fields. And I want to make sure that when we get into these agreements with the Community College, we were going to, we're going to help them. But we expect for them to possibly share their field space, their classrooms with the community. So I think this is a great example of how we can, whether we have jurisdiction over the Community College District or the Unified School District. The fact of the matter is, we can play a huge role in these land use issues as we move forward. There is no more land. We have to be more creative about it. But we've got to figure out how to work better together. And the community colleges, in my opinion, need to figure out how to reconnect with the community in which they serve. And that's where I think we're going to come up with the ideas in our committee. So I appreciate this vision that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also want to support you in this motion. And I concur with Mr. Ridley Thomas. As I go to community meetings throughout the Ninth Council District where a great number of new construction, newly constructed schools will take place, the thing that concerns me the most is that, yes, we do need more schools. Yes, in some cases, eminent domain is necessary in some cases. But what concerns me is the apparent inability of the School District to look at other options such as designing school facilities on commercial sites or designing schools to fit on sites where things, activities that need to be abated, such as prostitution motels or swap meets engaging in the sale of counterfeit goods, take place. So I would like to see a better discussion and greater understanding, a formal understanding developed with the Unified School District to avoid eminent domain whenever possible and to look at sites where there are telecom buildings, parking lots, places that are underutilized and can only bring benefit to the community as opposed to removing people from their homes. So that's what I would like for you to incorporate. Thank you.
Ms. Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to suggest to the makers of the motion and everyone else who's interested in this that one of the, among the things that we discuss with both the School District and the Community College District is what kinds of buildings they are going to be building. We all think immediately about the possibility of shared use of, for example, labs and equipment and play fields and so on. But this is, if people are building, if they're, particularly if they're building in the city, this is an opportunity to help them remember to design buildings for energy efficiency, which ultimately reduces their costs, which makes it easier to pay teachers decent salaries and to keep the tuition rates low enough. There are, there are water conservation design elements that can be built in. And I'm happy to tell you that Loyola Marymount University, a private school, double-plumbed its business school when they built it so that when the gray water gets there, they'll be able to use gray water for plumbing and save the potable water, which we all need to save because there isn't any more of it to use for the things you need potable water for. Somebody was foresighted enough to make the investment decision to put that extra set of pipes in during construction, which is the only time it makes sense financially to do it. The same thing can be said of insulation, passive solar, all those things that everybody thinks of as touchy-feely, but they're actually worth real money. They really save in the operating costs. And so I know that they're terribly busy, both at the School District and at the Community College District, simply trying to keep up with the demand for their facilities. But just as we are asking them to be sure to take care of our residents in the most efficient possible way and to displace as little housing as possible because we don't have a lot of that to spare either, I think this is really an opportunity to find ways that we can work with them. As you mentioned, Tom DWP, of course, has already been working with the schools on the Cool Schools program and some other things. But perhaps we can expand that. So I hope that you will incorporate that in your list of things. Thank you.
Mr. Burson.
Well, this has all been very invigorating, but I can tell you, I don't want to be, throw the low negative barbin here, but I can tell you that the school, the real problem we have with why we don't have adequate schools is because we have an ineptness at the Board of Education that's been going on for some time. Currently, we have a fee that is attached to all residential use that is attached, I think they raised it originally from two and three-quarters percent. I think it's up to about seven percent now on any housing start that's supposed to be used for schools. They haven't built one school. We also, we had, in Porter Ranch, for example, when we talk about providing land, we provided two sites. We provided a site for a primary school and for a middle school in Porter Ranch. Now, that was provided back in 1990. Do you think they've made any move to build those? No, they haven't because they're not doing what they should be doing. I don't know where the money is going, what they're getting for this stuff, but they're not. I suspect a lot of it's being used more for administrative costs. I think if somebody were to look at their administrative costs, you'd find that they're way out of order. And the fact, the fact is that even if they haven't been building schools with the money, a lot of the kids don't have books and don't have the equipment they need in the schools. And it's because people down there are not doing their job. It's as simple as that. Now, I sympathize. I agree with all of you that we would love to have LA Unified what it was when I was going to school. And don't hold this against the LA Unified that I was a product of that system, but I was. And I can tell you that in those days, we didn't have all the fees that we have on housing. That's, by the way, one of the stumbling blocks to why you don't have more housing starts because you add seven and a half percent or whatever it is to the cost of building a house. And obviously, you take a lot of buyers out of the affordability of that housing. So that's just one obstacle. But the big problem is, where is the money going? It certainly hasn't been going into new locations. We all know the farce that's been going on with the Ambassador Hotel. So, you know, what is the answer? Obviously, we do want to work with the School District, mainly not because it's our real responsibility, but because we want to see a better atmosphere and more schools and better schools and better benefits for teachers who are underpaid to be provided for. So in that sense, I'll go along with this, but I want you to not hold the highest anticipation that you're going to see results from what you get because we've bent over backwards to try to make the education system in this city better. And it just hasn't worked because the money has been misused. And the board, in my opinion, the administration and the board have been inept. And that's the bottom line. So you're going to have to, you're going to have to help them a little bit or maybe get some better members.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, this has been a worthwhile discussion. And we have to really thank Mr. Labange for putting this issue on the table. Or it never would have happened without his insight and assessing the fact that there's a need for the Board of Education and the City Council, landing and plant, land use, plum, should come together, Education Committee, now we have an Education Committee for the first time, and find out where we are and where we're going to go. Certainly, there's a need for improving our schools and generating sites for which schools to be built. And we create these sites, Mr. Burson, we're going to try to make sure that they go out there and build those schools, elementary schools and middle schools. I just been reminded that we worked an elementary school in my district four, fifteen years ago. The school board was going in there and taking forty houses out of that area, forty, to expand the school, moving, removing senior citizens, saying they need more play area. Well, you ought to just drive by there and see the play area that now they have that they're not even using. But the way we stopped that, we had Senator Roberti and Senator Ruse introduce, Roberti and Ruse, I got them to introduce legislation to say that you can build up on the third floor and if you, in the fourth and the fifth grade, you can go up on the, on the third floor and just accept the land that they had. Given the fact that coming from back east, in a high school, the recreation area was on top of the roof, the high school. So they didn't have all this open space. Yes, they got good athletes and they got a good education. So we are off base here with the state policy. That's the state requirement that you have so much play area for the occupied classroom area. So I want to commend Mr. Labange for bringing this to us. And certainly, we should vote for it. Should go to the Education Committee and have those guys come in and tell us what they're going to do in order to solve the problem. One closing statement, Mr. President. We do have some influence over the school board. I want to repeat that. We do have some influence over the school board. Every ten years, we draw the lines for their district. Now, we may, if they don't come over and be real nice, you know, you can let them know that you're unhappy and give them something they don't want. You understand what I mean? Because you have a lot of leverage every ten years.
Mr. Labange.
Just wanted to mention also, members, Jane Blumentfeld, who is very experienced, is the planning officer for the City Planning Department, directly responsible, chiefly responsible for liaison for the Unified School District, which will help us. And also, I wanted to compliment Ms. Galanter on her words in discussing how we should build buildings in the future and remind the council members that the Community College District did pass a bond of support of the people of Los Angeles for all their facilities. And this is the exact time we should be able to go in and help and assist and discuss. And I want to compliment Hal Burson for his comments, but also know, Hal, that there are new people over on Grand Avenue. And we're going to work with the new people who are there, Caprice Young and all the members of the school board to deliver for the people of Los Angeles. That's what we have to do. That's what they have to do. I thank you all for this support. The chairperson, Ms. Han, and I will work very hard, Mr. Padilla, as president of the council on this issue, to move it forward and back to you as combined. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
It should be obvious from the conversation that there is a lot of interest in this and that there is a significant amount of knowledge that is resident on this council about this matter. Not only knowledge, but history. And, Mr. Labange, as you so uniquely do as a matter of course, it might be useful just to kind of gather that up and have it serve a useful, within the context of the committee hearing that's going to take place. A method by which that can be accomplished is, perhaps the CLA should be tasked with writing a report that reviews the council's legislative history on this matter. You mentioned Ms. Blumentfeld's role. There needs to be an update on what that really looks like. I recently received a report from her office laying out what projects, school-related projects that are going on in the Eighth District. And I suspect everyone did. That was very helpful. So I think we need to kind of figure out from whence we've come on this in order to project to the next level. Because I know that there's a lot of information just around this horseshoe that the committee should take stock of in order to move forward. It seems to me to be very, very important. I can think of no issue, land use related, that will have a more significant impact on the quality of life in our respective communities than the school construction agenda because there is so much money in it and what it means to families from CD one through CD fifteen. So I would offer that as a suggestion that could help assess it. And I would be more than happy to be helpful and on my staff if you so desire.
Ms. Han.
I was just going to suggest this might be a good issue, Mr. Reyes, to have a joint plum and education neighborhoods, which I know would make Jim McQuiston really happy because he wants to attend both of our committee meetings on exactly these issues. And he's frustrated because we meet at the exact same time. And I think a lot of people who are interested in this, this exact issue of land use as it involves our schools and community colleges have a tough time because it's heard in my committee and it's heard in your committee. So this might be a great one. And I would like to see us do it if we could before Christmas here. And I think that would, that's, would be a great, this is a perfect issue for us to have a joint committee meeting. What do you think about that?
Mr. Reyes.
I think it's great. The timing is perfect. Now that we're beginning, we can start setting the agenda. We have four years to knock this out. I think it's a good, right. So at this point, let's make it happen sooner than later. I'd like to add to that amendment process, the friendly amendment. I won't let this go, but I'd like to get perhaps the CLA to do an analysis of what it would cost to deck a portion of the river like they've done in San Diego and other places. And I would really like to see the savings, not only in monetary, but also in how we save our neighborhoods from houses being torn out to place schools on them. Perhaps have a venue here that we can focus on if it's feasible, but let's understand what we're doing. But I would love to have that joint committee.
Okay, that ends the discussion on this item. Mr. Clerk, we have the motion and several amending motions.
Actually, there's suggestions that are made to the chair of the committee. There's one amending motion, which is Mr. Reyes to conduct an analysis of the cost to cover the river monetary and both quality of life issues, portions thereof, the river.
No, I don't want to, I don't think, if I could just say that, don't say the river because you don't want to cover the river, but any, any space, which includes freeway space. There's a high school in Hollywood that's right next to the Hollywood freeway that they may over. You mentioned the East Coast method. You know, just say, do that. I don't want to scare the river.
Or shall we just acknowledge these as elements to consider in the report to committee and council as well as, I believe, a CLA report has been requested to summarize the council's legislative history on school district matters?
Bottom line here is that we have underused airspace. And there are strategic locations for these types of technologies in terms of decades that in the law might be much cheaper than rooting out homes. And basically, they might be more strategic in location because they'll be near the neighborhoods that need schools.
So as I look at the chair of the committee and the author of the motion, I don't believe there's any objection to incorporating the issue and the concerns both in the discussion and to recommendations that will come forth. So I think the matter that needs to be resolved is the process in which we're going to do this. Is this report to one committee, to a joint committee meeting, the education neighborhoods are planning, or to the full council? The general consensus seems to be that it goes first to a joint committee meeting, but expect and anticipate a solid presentation at the full council along with recommendations not only from the School District full council, along with recommendations not only from the school district and the task force, but emanating from the committees as well. Is that clear? Okay, if that encompasses all these suggestions and the amending motions, Mr. Clerk? I believe so, then let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, I believe, is item twenty-eight.
Item number twenty-eight is called special by Councilmember Garcetti, it's on the supplemental agenda, it's a public hearing has been held.
Called special by Councilmember Garcetti before beginning with discussion and debates by members, a public hearing has been held on this item, and as staff is moving forward to answer questions and maybe make a brief presentation, there is a speaker card that has been submitted, so unless there's any objection, I'll call forward Mr. Brian Darcy.
Good morning, council members, this is my first time in these chambers since you moved back in.
Welcome back.
It's nice to be here. I'm here to quote Yogi Berra as deja vu all over again. I was here in support of the sale, seems like darn close to a year, and I was supporting the sale, and, and I support the compromise, but I think that it should be put into some As Secretary Treasurer of the California Coalition of Utility Employees, which represents about thirty-five thousand utility employees statewide, we made comments back during the deregulation debate, that basically predicted everything that was going to happen, including taking into, into consideration that, that the utility business is a boom or bust industry, and that means that you're either going to have an excess or a shortage, and, and the best that you can do is hedge against the shortage and to accept the glut. The state is now experiencing a, an interesting problem, which is exacerbated by, by the lowering of gas prices, but it's now trying to renegotiate its contracts. The two things that I would like to leave you with are, number one, is that you shouldn't be running around and making your decision based on a chicken-licking attitude, the department is in very good shape. The repowering that's, that's going forward, which I hope you all publicly support, increases the capacity, under the Supreme Court decision, to increase by fifty megawatts when you repower, to a total of between one hundred and fifty and two hundred megawatts. The total project or ownership of Mojave is, is a little over three hundred megawatts, so we're talking about nearly nothing. Now, the amendment that I understand, and I haven't read it, that, that talks about renewables, and I would hope that the, that the council also includes in that distributed generation, ought to be done on DWP property, and there ought to be a commitment, and you ought to demand that the, that the general manager bring back to you a feasibility report that says that you are going to do renewables inside the basin, and you're going to do the distributed generation on DWP property, and you're going to increase your need for the increased load, doing it that way, with that proviso, but don't make your decision based upon some fear that your capacity is not going to be met, because it is, and it, and you're already there. Now, clearly, I supported the full sale, because I think that it's unfortunate that Los Angeles has anything to do with, with the Mojave plant, in the sense that, that the environmental disaster that existed there, or exists there, is, is something that you really don't want to be part of, but I would support the compromise, and to move on, and make sure that this council is kept apprised of all developments on renewables and distributed generation, and, and that you become participants in the resource planning, instead of making decisions based on fear. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, once again, total public comment on this item. Mr. Holden.
President, please, you want to hear from Mr. Garcetti, he called special for you. President, members, here we go again. I thank Mr. Brian De Arce for his comments, very informative, certainly about the gas prices, but as he said, he was here speaking in favor of selling the Mojave share that we own, the share that we own. Number one. Number two, Mr. President, members, they said that we would have some plants, generating plants built in our community, in the city, Southern California, and it used gas as the fuel to generate that energy, not until the gas prices go through the ceiling. We just looked at Mr. Freeman, whom they supported, Ms. Galanter and all, and he negotiated some deals for Sacramento, at a cost of forty-three billion dollars. Probably the governor hired that guy, that we hoped we were going to fire him, Mr. Reardon was going to fire him, before he got a message to quit. He still didn't want to renegotiate those deals, but then the President of the Senate, President of the Republican Union Committee, in the day's paper, saying, hell, Freeman's foot to the fire once again, and I guess they gave him enough, all he could refuse, and he said, oh yeah, I think we should renegotiate. Now, whether or not they're going to negotiate with him or not, that's another thing, but it's a deal for the energy providers, not for the people of the state of California. Luckily, we didn't let him sell us all entirely while he was here. And, once again, I don't like what this general manager is doing either, because I met with his attorney, his advisor in my office, we discussed what the consequences would be if we did not sell out to ten percent, that we would go to arbitration, the worst that could happen is that we would just get to one hundred and ninety million dollars, and we sold for it in the first place. The best thing we could have is retain what we have, or they could say, well, you should take ten percent and sell ten percent. So the arbitrator can make a recommendation of the three, recommend one of the three. So you don't have to make this move. I think we should have, despite what Mr. De Arce said, this is just not much energy to consider, it would benefit our people, number one, Mojave Desert, and just go to the other agency, they sell it outside the state of California, we're required to sell it inside the state of California, and trade it for the city, we got the transmission line, we, we just, we just bought everything, caused stranded debt, we paid in advance, we had outstanding debt, nobody wanted to look to the city of L.A., but the consumers were paying, and now you're ripping them off, poor judgment, I'm not saying you do it intentionally, you just don't know what you're doing.
Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Mr. President, they still don't know what they're doing. They voted for this turkey, and it was a turkey then, it's a turkey now.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy, no, no, you eat turkeys like that.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I, I've been wrestling with this a little bit, and so I decided I'd give some more information, and what I learned is, number one, as I said earlier, we didn't get all the information on the national thing. Number two, if we go through, if we don't go through with this, if we redact completely on this deal, although there is an out clause, according to outside council, as well as our own city attorney, our chances at best are fifty-fifty of prevailing. Now, what happens if we don't prevail? We lose all of the particular project. So, what does this mean? It means, let me, let me explain to you, not that it's that big a thing, but the adjusted cost of the power from this project is two point seven cents. Now, that's below, well below Delta, for example, which is three point eight, am I correct on that? Which gives you an idea of why the benefits are of retaining as much of the ownership as we can. I think we were given bad information before, and frankly, it's not too late to correct that the, by negotiating the settlement, we're guaranteed ten percent. The ten percent means that we're going to give up half of what we get from this particular project, but it also means that we've got our foot in the door, because Southern Cal Edison is probably not, who has fifty-six, is fifty-six percent ownership, is not going to be able to comply with the cleanup because of financial reasons. Therefore, will give the city, DWP, and the other partner, which is, what is it? Yeah, the opportunity to pick up the other percentages, because if they are not in compliance, and they are not able to go ahead with the orders of EPA, in order to do that, then the others can step in and take that ownership. Well, this is a business opportunity for the city, for DWP, because if they can pick up the additional capacity at two point seven cents for production, it gives us the ability to produce a lower, a lower cost fuel for the city. Now, what, what you haven't been told is that Delta, we are losing, we have the potential of losing another fifty percent of what we've already lost in the Delta project, because the ownership of Utah Power has the ability to recall, to recall that in our contract, and we will lose a certain amount of, what is the exact amount we're going to lose, can you speak up? Why don't you come up to the microphone here? Because I think it's important that council members know this, we potentially have already lost some of the production from Utah, and we will lose, they have the ability to claim the rest of it, simply because it's, it's a lower cost, cost of power, so we potentially will lose some more. I, I said before, our top responsibility is to make sure we have plenty of power for the city of Los Angeles, this is not a panic thing, this is a thing of assurance, and I think it's also a good business practice type situation, opportunity that we have. So I am going to go along with the way I voted the other day, which I did, holding my nose a little bit, but today, I'm not holding my nose anymore, I think it's really the best thing that we can do at the present time, and I think we need to proceed, and I think we ought to, furthermore, be prepared in such time as additional ownership is available, we ought to be prepared to step up to the plate and take it.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. The staff has to respond to the question.
Yes, Henry Martinez, Assistant General Manager for Power Services, Mr. President's correct, the Utah participants in Intermountain, as we call, two hundred megawatts of power, they have rights to recall another hundred megawatts over the next several years, so conceivably, worst-case scenario, they recall three hundred megawatts, they would be coming to the city on a round-the-clock basis, twenty-four, seven.
And Mr. President, David Wiggs, current general manager, we agree with you, Mr. Burnson, we would continue to evaluate this, our ownership in this plant, both to stay in it and perhaps to get more, as you say, Edison has made it clear, and will probably file a letter this week, that they are having trouble potentially making their payments, but they are also negotiating with their PUC and the Indian tribes, we, we still think they will probably, a year from now, be in a position to do it, but if not, it will present opportunities that we should continue to evaluate and bring back to this council.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, I, I still feel strongly that, in my opinion, I, I feel like we're lucky to have at least gotten to the point where we're in this compromise settlement agreement, because really, the, the first issue, and I'm not going to criticize what was done before I got here, but, Mr. Holden, as you said, I mean, the first deal on this, you know, as you know, David Freeman did not give us an out clause in the first agreement, there was no way, the city attorney, I think, thought it was a bad deal, but nevertheless, we were not allowed to, either party was allowed to change their mind, so I feel at this point, we're fortunate that they've agreed to this settlement and agreed to this compromise, and I still feel like, you know, whether or not Brian feels that we're going to always meet our capacity and meet our demand, I still feel at this point, in a very, very unreliable power market, that would really would be wrong for us to, at this point, lose any power that we have an opportunity to have. And one of the things I didn't bring up last time, but, you know, having out-of-state power is also a huge asset, in light of the fact that if, for any reason, you know, through disaster, through natural disaster, or, or, God forbid, a terrorist attack, where we could lose our power sources here locally, it would be a huge advantage to have out-of-state power that we own and control. So again, at this point, colleagues, I think it would be a, it's, it's, it's the best deal we have on the table, we should, at all costs, hang on to power that we own, and if we could have more of it, I wish we could, and if we have an opportunity, I think that's something we should clearly look at, while we move forward to helping to clean up the plant and clean up the environment where we've been all this time, but this is not the time to lose out-of-state power.
Ms. Galanter.
You know, it's always cheaper to generate dirty power than clean power, that's just a fact of life. I think that, I, I don't know how many of you heard the sort of introductory part of Brian's statement, but he did say that he had supported the original, the original deal, to sell our entire interest, and he suggested if I, you'll tell me if I'm misquoting you, but I believe what you said was, don't vote to keep any of this, because if your reason is solely that you're worried we don't have enough capacity, because we have enough capacity, we will have enough capacity, is that pretty much what you said? I mean, if you have other reasons, you have other reasons, but the, remember, the guys who work in IBEW or on the power lines are the ones who know, they're also the ones who, who live here in the Los Angeles area, and they spend their money here, the money that we pay them in salaries. That is not the case of the people we hire who live in Utah, Nevada, or Arizona, or New Mexico, or any of those other places, they spend money where they live, like all the rest of us. The, the fact is that, you know, keep in mind how we got where we are today, we made a deal, we made a deal, Mr. Holden says, Mr. Freeman tried to sell us to Edison, it was Mr. Reardon who wanted to sell us to Edison, Mr. Freeman, whatever his other flaws may be, was always a proponent, and probably always will be, for public power, and the entire council, I think including Mr. Holden, agreed with him when, actually, and they had been before he got here, when Reardon first proposed that we sell the plant to Edison, because he said, they're the ones who really know how to run this business. Well, we didn't do that, that was a principled decision by the council in favor of public power, so we're still here and we're still having this debate. We also made a principled decision in favor of trying to reduce our reliance on out-of-state power, reduce our reliance on dirty power, and improve our conservation programs in order to be able to reduce our reliance on those other things, and we were doing very well. Part of the program was a deal we made, that we would sell our interest to first, the private company, and then Salt River exercised its authority and took over the right to buy it from us. There was a, what you are being told today is a settlement of a lawsuit, is a settlement of a lawsuit, it's a settlement of a lawsuit that occurred when we got sued, because we backed out of the deal. Somebody decided, maybe we shouldn't hurry to sell them this twenty percent, maybe we shouldn't sell them the twenty percent, we didn't finish the deal when we were supposed to finish the deal, so they sued us. And being nice guys, they said, okay, so we won't spring you out forever and ever, we'll make a nice deal, and you can, you can sell us only half of what you were supposed to sell us. So that lawsuit is something that we caused to happen, we got sued. Saying, oh gee, we're going to settle a lawsuit, is not such a good reason to, to do this. I believe, from everything I've been able to learn from the department, that we will do fine without this plant, we will continue with the programs that are already underway, we will have other sources to make up any difference. If our customers keep conserving at the rate they have been, and if we ask them to do more, I think they will do more, we'll do even better. So if you just want to vote and hang on to it because you like having more coal-powered power, well then do it, but I would strongly urge you not to do it.
Mr. Garcetti.
And I hope you all got my letter.
I, I received your letter, thank you very much for it. I know that Councilmember Weiss was interested in hearing the arguments, I know that Councilmember Zion, and I just had a discussion, I know that Councilmember Glanter has been running around, talking to a number of colleagues as well, I know that one of our colleagues just left. just left, so if we just do the numerical voters before, this is going to play out the way it did. So, I'm really addressing this to folks who might have before voted one way and might be open to voting another. There are arguments that can be made here, clearly on economics, but I think it boils down to this. One could make the argument that right now, it's difficult economic times, and because of that, the cheapest thing to do with fuel storage facilities in the port would be to keep them there rather than to move them away. One could make the argument that it's very expensive to try to do something when we need so much housing to oppose it, something like Omison Ranch, and yet, people are moving forward with that. We could say in Sunshine Canyon, that it's much cheaper just to use that landfill, and right now, it's difficult fiscal times, let's do that. All of these things have a cost. I agree. I agree with you on that. And my point is this, all of these things have a cost. Councilmember Galanter is right, it is always cheaper to produce dirty power. I would ask my colleagues to reject this, to move towards what was the original plan, to sell off all 20%. Right now, Edison doesn't look like it's going to be able to pay for selling, for cleaning up its portion, and we may have financial liabilities because of that. This is clearly a moral issue, and it's also whether or not we will, not just in the port, not just out in the valley, not just in each of our neighborhoods, make those decisions to make the right choice, but also in places where we don't live, but where we have an impact on people's lives. That is the argument.
Mr. Reyes.
The council members, as a person who has a district with neighborhoods that border freeways where the highest level contamination tend to occur, where our area authority management district calls them red zones, because of that pollution factor, there's no one, great advocate that wants to see our communities improved in terms of their quality of air. And what I've done is I've gotten information from the Grand Canyon Trust, I've gotten consent decree, and I'm just learning other imaginations about how this thing came about. One of the key issues for me is, from what I understand, is that if we do leave, abandon this site, that the coal burning will continue anyway without mitigations. Is that correct?
Not, not without mitigation. They will have to clean the plant anyway, whether we're, we're there or not, they have to comply, the owners have to comply with the, with the consent decree that you see.
But the fact that we're there, we're also accountable for that, we're adding to that. Okay. From studying the chart, right now, we have a very slim margin of where we're at in terms of having accessible power. Having this plant available gives us that little buffer that we need, right? Then again, I understand that there's almost like a crash suit because depending on the market, it might even be cheaper to go to the market.
It could be, if prices stay low and, and there's plenty of power to buy, which is what Ms. Galanter had suggested. If we don't have this 150 megawatts, nobody here is trying to suggest to you, we can't keep the lights on, but it does increase our risk that we will have to replace that power at higher cost, and we can't tell you today what that cost would be. We know what Mojave is, though.
One other thing I just want to mention is that everything is based on demand. I mean, the demand in the, in the West Coast or the western states can be high enough, there will be a shortage. I mean, we're planning and forecasting basically to the future, several months ahead, to try to figure out where the power's going to be at. So, but there's a lot of dynamics in the aspect of how we're going to meet our load. We know for a fact that if we beat Mojave, we'll be able to meet the load in the future.
So, the fact is that Grand Canyon Trust, Yara Close, National Parks and Conservation Association have agreed to this consent decree where we are also made, and we are engaging now, correct?
That's correct.
So, our standards of cleaning the area, maintaining it, are being monitored, are being enforced by advocates, but the same concerns that Councilmember Garcetti has mentioned, and others who are advocates for the environment.
That is correct.
Okay. So, are we in a position then to have the flexibility to say, can you come back in a year and a half, two years, to see if we need this plant? Dismiss it, give Utah to make sure that we follow through on the alternative means of energy within the basement so that we can continue cleaning our air? Is that something we can do?
Yes, that's correct. We can, we can and should and will come back to you and to continue to evaluate our participation in this project. I can't tell you what it will be worth three years from now or exactly the market situation, but certainly, we should continue to reevaluate our position, and we will.
So, our objective is to not clean our air here, but we also have the opportunity to clean the air somewhere else. Geographically, the way conditions are, our pollution gets blown out there anyway during a certain time of the year, and vice versa. But bottom line here is that we have that flexibility. Would that be in a form of amendment, Council President, that we ask, they come back, we hear in half to two years, to see if we can get, sell this, meantime, be getting very odd reports on the progress on the plans that we're supposed to be working on?
That could be done in a form of a motion.
I would like to propose that.
That is a motion, is there a second? Ms. Miskowski seconds. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Holden.
President, members, I, just in case somebody got the wrong message, that this is not, we're not being sued. I think Ms. Galanter said we're being sued, it's illegal. No lawsuit involved. What happened is that AES was going to buy our 20%, and Freeman and the RC and members of the council supported that. I give everybody credit for what they did. Then, of course, you have the Salt River Project, SRP decided they would exercise their options rather than sell it outright to AES, and say, we will take your 20%.
That's correct.
All right. When they exercised, proceeded to exercise their option, they, they had one week left, because it's one year, it would have been gone. They had a year to exercise their option, and they exercised their option in 51 weeks after their first negotiated sale to AES. Maybe you don't know that, you just were general managers, but those are the facts. Okay. Is that correct, sir? No. They had six months. Six months, whatever, it's the six months that they did it one week before they had a few days before. All right, so I say correct, and you do.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, okay, all right, very good. So, the fact of the matter is that not Edison tried to sell, what percentage is owned by Edison? 56%. Now, they tried to sell their portion to what company? AES. AES also. The PUC said no, because the portion that Edison owns, that's being transmitted for use in California, that's not correct. If it sold to AES, it would have been outside of California. So, it's not as, these people are saying now. We could lose that energy for Cover City, for Inglewood, for unincorporated areas where Edison's not served. Now, I see nothing wrong with trying to negotiate an agreement with Edison and PUC. Should they want to exercise the right to dispose of what they have, we'll become project managers for their project. That way, they're not selling it to us. We have an agreement with PUC and Edison, where we're project managers, and then began to cut a deal with West LA, okay, with Cover City, unincorporated areas, they've asked us, they're trying to get legislation passed to supplement it, whereby we would have the authority then to sell energy at the rate we sell it to our customers, our neighbor, our neighbors, is that correct?
Yeah, but those bills were vetoed.
I understand, but he's running for reelection now, he won't veto nothing that's going to happen to people in this area, especially in Southern California. We put that legislation back in again, put it in, it'll go through the process, because it went through the process before, legislative process, and he will, I guarantee he will not veto it. So, let's, let's, let's do that. President, members, I just want to say that I'm voting no for different reasons, because it's going to go to arbitration, it'll go to arbitration, it's not illegal, we're not being, we're not litigating, it'll go to arbitration, and the arbitrator will rule, make one decision, one, they would say, you cut the deal as is, two, or you get 10%, three, or you lose, and you get 290 million bucks. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't believe the arbitrator has the right to pick in between. He will have to say, either you go forward and sell all of your users, or you give.
You believe, the arbitrator has the right to make a recommendation, they suggest because it's not being litigated. Arbitrator can say, you do, that's what arbitration is, you do one, second, or third.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
I thought I understood, but then I'm confused again, but I guess I was having a problem with the lawsuit issue, and I was going to ask Mr. Deaton if you would, is there, or is there not a lawsuit, and is this a settlement of, as Ms. Galanter said, of a lawsuit?
Let me, basically, we had a contract with AES. No, it is not a lawsuit. We had a contract with AES. In that contract, it indicated that if Salt River Project or another exercised their first right of refusal, we would pay them $3 million. We paid them $3 million. Salt River Project has in turn exercised their first right of refusal. There is a provision in the contract with AES that talks about conditions changing, which puts it in a question mark, what is a result of, of their inability to exercise on the contract. As a result of that, they have agreed to go 50-50 rather than go to arbitration, which is what we're recommending. Rather than go to arbitration and take the chance of losing it, they're taking the same position.
Okay. Well, again, I, I agree, I still think, you know, we're sort of lucky to have this compromise on the table, and I still feel like, even morally, Mr. Garcetti, seems to me, it's a much better chance to stay there and clean it up than to absolve ourselves at this point, even though we've been involved in it all these years and have helped to, to pollute the environment. Seems to me, it's a, it's a better deal to keep the power, be involved in cleaning it up, and, and stay there and make it a, a better power plant. I, I feel a bit about that option, and I think that's the best thing we do today.
Mr. Zion.
Colleagues, shall we move to the previous question? Please. We had Ms. Galanter as the last speaker, she would let her conclude.
Let her speak, Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Mr. Holden. If it weren't for you, Mr. Holden, I would never get on television. It just never occurred to me to do these things. Well, I don't know about that. I just wanted to point out, we don't need state legislation for those other cities to buy power from us. What they need to do, I actually explored this with Mayor Cover City, several mayors ago, what they need to do is form themselves into a power authority, which they have the legal ability to do that, and just have to get themselves together and do it, and we can sell to another power authority wholesale power. We don't need state legislation. I, I think, look, I think everybody's made up their minds here, and I'm not really standing up here now expecting to change anybody's position at all, but I do want to say, I think that arguing that we have the moral authority that somehow going to make cleaning up Mojave better than if we're not there is ridiculous. The fact is that although we do many fine and wonderful things to the environment here in the city, and the Department of Water and Power is behind a lot of them, the fact is, the rest of the world looks at us and they say, Los Angeles has the dirtiest air in the world, who are they to be preaching to anybody else about the environment? The way we get moral authority is by actually doing something. And Reyes is exactly right, as Mr. Wiggs pointed out, whatever's going to happen at Mojave is going to happen, whether we're there or not, because it's under, now under a court order, and it's, and the federal regulator's watching, and it's only a question of whose money is going to go into Mojave, whether ours is going to go into cleaning up the air, out-of-state or cleaning up the air in-state. So, vote for, for, you know, however you're going to vote, but, you know, let's not pretend that this isn't basically an argument based on a lot of different political forces. I think those of you who are new here are understandably, correctly concerned that these are very complex issues, and three and a half months or whatever you've had is really not enough time to learn them thoroughly, even if you had done nothing else for three and a half, four months, and you had other things on your mind. So, I understand that, that this is a lot to take in at any single time, and I wish you all well, you've got a long career ahead of you, lots longer than mine, to, to learn it all, and it's going to be, you'll find that it changes so fast that whatever you learned last week doesn't apply next week anyway. This is a year-old agreement that we are backing out of, and it's true, well, sorry, I get my lawsuits confused. We settled this one before the lawsuit, instead of waiting until afterwards, but it amounts to the same thing. We backed out of a deal, we paid the 3.8 million for it, which is already gone. We lose that whether we sell 10%, 20%, 10%, at this point, because it's already gone. Don't even figure that in your calculations. We could have said, if we'd gone through with the original deal, we could be spending it. No, we wouldn't have saved it. Why not?
That didn't have, I'm sorry, there's a bit of confusion about that. The 3.8 really has nothing to do with what we're doing right now. The 3.8 is an agreement with AES.
Right.
That if Salt River exercised their right of first refusal, we had to pay.
We had to pay even if Salt River did.
Didn't make any.
But we're not getting that back from Salt River by, by selling them.
Salt River doesn't know it, we have to pay.
We, we just lost 3.8 million, and it's gone anyway. All right, that's the end of my time, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Clerk, there's an amending motion on the desk, Reyes, Miskowski, to direct the Department of Water and Power to come back periodically to report on compliance with consent decree, indication requirements, and in a year and a half to assess the facility.
I think Ms. Galanter said something, but I support or oppose the man selling DWP to Edison? Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Clerk.
So, 28A, the first vote is on the Reyes amendments, second by Ms. Miskowski. On the amendments, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That amendment is approved. Now you have number 28 as amended, it's the ordinance, second reading. The ordinance is not amended. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, three downs.
That is approved. For Ms. Miskowski. Item number seven is currently on the desk, do you wish to consider that matter at this time? Let's take item number seven next. Item seven called special by Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, may I ask you to push your button, please?
The staff was to come forward, and that's why we held it on the table, Mr. President. Staff here on item number seven.
Good morning, I'm Commander Dan Koenig from the Department.
Are you going to share with us the information that you shared with the public safety committee regarding compressed work schedules, pros and cons, benefits, plus and minuses, I think it's, rather than my having to do it here and report on my time?
I'm having trouble hearing you, sir, because of the noise behind me.
Okay, I would think you would share with the members of the council and the public pretty much the same information you shared with the Public Safety Committee regarding the compressed work schedule, the pluses and minuses, and the things that's in this report, so I can save my time.
If I could just ask, Mr. Holden, it really wasn't the department's report, it was our council's report, the CLA represented. I think Commander Koenig can give you an overview, or the chair can.
Oh, well, either or, and then I'll speak to the issues as the, would you suggest that the CLA do it, or you?
I understand that the CLA staff person who handled this is in training today and isn't able to be here, so we can either continue today, or we can give you some.
Mr. Deaton is here, he should, he knows everything, almost.
The compressed, update on the compressed work schedule.
We'll continue tomorrow until tomorrow, I mean, one day, Mr. President, we continue.
Request to continue one day, Ms. Miskowski. Clerk, anybody else? Then, without objection, item seven is continued one day. Next time, please. Item number 29 called special. Is there a staff presentation on item 29? Mr. CLA? Mr. Deaton? Can you give us an update?
What you have before you, I think, is a motion from Mr. Bedea to authorize the Department of Recreation and Parks and the Community Development Department to proceed with the grants, and requesting the Prop K steering committee during this holiday season on a weekly basis, monitor the progress, ensuring that we do the best job we can in order to encumber the monies, the state monies for the park projects listed in that, in that exhibit. We have identified, I think, the projects, and just asking for authorization from the council to approve the necessary go-hads which are in the, in the resolution, and authorizing the Prop K committee to oversee any problems. That's the CAO myself and the city engineer.
Chair recognizes Mr. Bedea.
Chair recognizes Mr. Badea.
Chair. And Mr. Deaton, for all the work that you, your office, the CAO, the department, have put into this last week, I think we've made quite a progress. And I ask colleagues to support the amending motion, the motion that has been introduced and is before us. I asked you the one specific question, Mr. Deaton. Attached to the motion and referenced in the motion is a specific and finite list of projects. Do we have any flexibility in the language of the motion to allow for additional projects if we discover later today, tomorrow, or the next day, under the opposite category?
We explored that possibility, and made some conversations with the city attorney, believe that we should come back and be specific for legal reasons, to make sure that when the council takes an action, it is on a specific project, and it isn't vague. And so we're going to continue to monitor. If we see the necessity to come back, we will come back and do all the work necessary prior to that, before we do so.
Okay. So how do you recommend we act? We'll take the action on the motion, and then just continue the item, definitely, so we can. Is that necessary?
Yes. I would actually, that's a good idea. Why don't we continue the item until, not this meeting, this week, but we have recessed in the following week, the following Tuesday, two weeks from today? I guess that's what I'm saying.
Okay. December 11. That would be my motion. Move approval of the motion before us, and on the subject matter itself, request to continue to be re-adjourned by us two weeks from today.
There is no one else wishing to speak, so we will act on that motion to continue this for two weeks, adopt the recommendations, release the knowledge, file the report today, and then continue this for two weeks, so that you can remain on the agenda.
Madam President, there is a motion that has been circulated, 29A, which I believe that Mr. Badea's request would be adopted today, and that the matter, subject matter be continued until December 11.
Okay. That matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes. That is the order. Fourth with, and continue the matter, if matter means on the agenda until December 11. Next item?
Item number 30, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number 30.
CLA, Mr. Deaton. Item number 30, would you explain one, two, and three as proposed before us? Badea's motion discussing bond measures and the election date change, and also terminations. Will you cover that? These are the titles that will appear on the ballot. Yes or no?
That's the order. The order, the title is adopted in the ordinance in each case, but this, each, as a part of the election code, the council has to act on the order in which each ballot measure will appear on the ballot. And in this case, where the suggestion is that the police bond, police fire bond be.
Any rationale for selecting the order that you put before us?
I think that the, yes, and I think that the most important issue is the rationale for selecting the order which is.
In my opinion, the most important issue is the $600 million bond issue.
You can tell these council members that the most important issue on the ballot is the bond measure rather than the term.
That's what I just said.
Go ahead.
I believe, I believe that the emergency operations center, the fire dispatch center, seven nuclear stations, a jail, and bomb squads are the most important issue on the ballot, and should be the number one issue, and that's the one that citizens should look at first, as it relates to city issues.
And the next one?
Second issue is the change in the dates, and the only reason that was number two was it came before, you did it before you did the other.
Okay. Now, changing the date from what to what, it's not part of this motion here. Mr. Badea put the motion in, but tell me what you mean by that.
Actually, I think I'll let Mr. Carey explain. The council has already approved the ordinance, which is going to shift in a charter amendment our primary election from April, the second Tuesday in April, to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March, which will correspond to what the state does and the county does. The general runoff election will be shifted from the first Tuesday in June to the third Tuesday in May to avoid the Memorial Day holiday. Basically, it gives considerable more time to my office and candidates, because there's a longer time between the period for filing and the March primary, and then there's a longer time between the March and the May runoff.
Now, repeat that again. We do it sometimes the second Tuesday in April.
Second Tuesday in April, and we're shifting to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March.
That's about a month. It's about a month earlier.
Correct. And it avoids conflict with school recesses, Jewish holidays. When we shift from the first Tuesday in June to the third Tuesday in May, we avoid the Memorial holiday. In the June, May oral election, literally 5,000 voters who had applied for absentee voter ballots could not get them because their applications arrived on a date after the legal deadline.
Mr. President, members of the.
Day holiday.
I just want to, you have already.
Very information, Mr. President.
Just what you have before you is the order. You have already approved this item going on the ballot. And so the debate on that, the debate today is, is the sequence in which the items will appear.
The only item you haven't approved this term was, and that's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow.
That comes tomorrow.
That's the final approval tomorrow.
Mr. President, members, the next question is, did you discuss with the requirements that set forth by the ethics law that said, "When you file for legal filing, acquire the signatures, and you don't, you're not certified until in February, and then the election is in March"? What are you talking about?
Mr. Holden, the Rules and Elections Committee heard my report, then they held an extensive public hearing. The Ethics Commission made a presentation supporting the change. The League of Women Voters also supported the change. The dates will be adjusted relative to raising fundraising, and the public.
For certification of candidates?
Which certification are you talking?
Candidates running for city office, like a city council?
Correct.
Okay. You take out your papers in January, end of January. And sometimes you got until the first week in February to take them out, order and order to get them back in again.
That date has now been moved to early on November.
November?
Correct.
And that, I didn't see any.
Mr. Holden, I circulated our report to every member of council, the city attorney, the controller, and the mayor.
All right. So I'm in trouble with my office.
And then we had at least two hearings in Rules and Elections. We did not have a hearing in public council, because there was no discussion.
No hearing in council?
No one called it special.
No one called it special? All right. We had a copy of every one, and I'll sit down.
No one called it special.
I'll sit down, and I'll use call everything special. That's why we had to call this thing special. That's the key. But I'm not running for reelection, these people are. Anyway, I'd like to have a copy of every report.
I'll get it to you, sir. Mr. Zine passes. Ms. Kowski.
Reiterate for Mr. Holden, then. In fact, this did come to committee, there was an extensive hearing, as Mr. Carey has indicated. We had a lot of testimony from the Ethics Commission. The Ethics staff was there. They had made some suggestions. We even had, as I remember, the county clerk who came and talked. But it was discussed fully in committee, and when it came to council, it just was not called special. But it was something that was unanimous from committee, unanimous from everyone who testified, League of Women Voters. There was no one who raised a question. And your point about the filing dates, all of that was acknowledged by the city clerk to move back in time, so they would have the same amount of time as they now do. And the only good thing about, well, one of the good things about this is particularly our election in June, which has, in some instances, been close from time to time, that it leaves the city clerk scrambling to certify an election and then have somebody perhaps have to take office within a week, or 10 days, or two weeks after an election is certified. So this gives a little more time to the city clerk for those closer elections, time to adjust it, not to mention time for the people who are victorious in those elections to do some transition and be, get ready to move into office. So I think this was something, as I said, was strongly recommended, and is also going to make it consistent with all the other elections that are held on a normal cycle in the March period instead of April for the city's races. So all of that was adjusted, was acknowledged, and was recommended unanimously by committee and adopted unanimously by council.
Ms. Galanter. What, Ms. Galant?
No, the measure you have today is setting the ballot measure. No, it wasn't a note. You adopted an ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with. Next item, please. Item number 32 is a closed session item. Do you wish to consider public comment at this time? Well, public comment period, not a public comment, to the public to address the council, but it is not appearing on today's agenda, and seeing no requests, public comment is closed. Mr. Clerk?
Item number 32 is still a closed session item. Do you wish to clear the desk at this time?
Let's clear the desk. Councilmember's request for excuse from council attendance, councilmember Burton's request of excuse, I know number 30, personal business, and motion is required. Ms. Galanter moves. Mr. Burton is excused. And motions proposed and referred. Those motions are proposed and referred. The desk is clear, so for item number 32. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 32, please continue till Friday.
Request to continue, item number 32, our only closed session item. Any objection? Seeing none. Item 32 is continued till this Friday. Which is, uh, yeah, 30th. The 30th, November 30th. Thank you. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Any adjournment motions? Mr. Burton.
Members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn the memory of Sam Pfefferman. He is a constituent who passed away at the age of 85 at Chatsworth. He's the father-in-law of a staff member, Elaine Pfefferman, who mans our Silmar office, and he's also the father of Jerry Pfefferman with the Department of Water. I'd ask that we, he's survived by one sister, one brother, son Gerald, two grandsons, Darren and Eric. I'd ask that we adjourn in his memory.
I'd like to do a second of that. Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Reverend O.C. Smith. I think some of you knew. He unfortunately passed away on Friday, November 23rd. He was 65 years old. He's probably best known for his song, "Little Green Apples." But I knew him primarily through his work with his church, which is located in my district, the City of Angeles Church of Religious Science. He's survived by his wife, two daughters, and numerous grandchildren. He was a really nice man.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, I'd like to join Ms. Galanter in that adjournment of Reverend O.C. Smith. More than, just about 30 years ago, when Mayor Bradley was sworn in as mayor, O.C. Smith was the one selected to sing there, and it's his "Impossible Dream." And we had the dedication of the Bradley Towers. Bradley was upstairs just recently, and once again, we played the tape where he sang the same song, "The Impossible Dream," at a reception held honoring Tom Bradley after he left the mayor's office, and he came back to City Hall two years thereafter. So he's going to be remembered for a lot of significant contribution to helping people in distress, individuals who needed his ministerial services, and in fact, that he was a great performer known worldwide. So O.C. Smith gave us a shot to all of us. He will be missed. If you want to say all members, I think it's appropriate.
All others. Any others? Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, request to adjourn in memory of Alan Hugh Bolshin, passed away November 20th, congestive heart failure. Leaves his mother Estelle, wife Sandy, sister Randy, brother-in-law Ron, nephews Daniel and Adam. Alan reported for work, did a presentation at work, fell ill, taken to the hospital, passed away. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Good meeting. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.